Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon, I'd like to welcome you to the May 7th, 2012 regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with an invocation offered by Reverend Brian Johnson, Associate Pastor at First United Methodist Church of Orlando. Reverend Johnson has served as Associate Pastor for 11 months. The First United Methodist Church has existed for over 130 years and is located in the heart of downtown, basically across the street from us, and we can hear the bells chiming from time to time. First Methodist has a long history of community services. One of the first five founding churches by dignity, participates in Feed the Need, the Fuller Center for Housing, which renovates housings in need of repair and family promise. The invocation will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led today by District 5 Commissioner Daisy Linum. If we could all please stand.
Let's join in prayer. Creator God, we are grateful for this beautiful day in the city beautiful. We begin this session of our city council seeking and welcoming your presence here among us. We find hope today in the promise that you will always walk with us whether we find ourselves in a valley or on a mountaintop. You have given this group here today the high responsibility of governing our city. We know this city belongs to you and that you have entrusted it into our hands, and so we humbly ask that you would give the mayor, the commissioners, and all of us present your wisdom. We need your guidance in policy and decision making. Give us ears that will continue to hear the cry of the needy as we remember the poor, the disenfranchised, and all of those who call Orlando home. Teach us to care for each other as you care for each one of us. You've called us to be good stewards of all that you've entrusted us with, and so we look to you today. May the decisions made here honor you. Amen.
Amen. I, the President of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of the quorum, please?
Commissioner Diamond?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Linum?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's take up in consideration the minutes of the April 23rd, 2012 workshop, agenda review, and city council meetings. Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, we're going to move towards presentations and recognitions, and today we begin our presentations on a very somber note. Gary Sane was to be here with us today, and I think many, most, well, everybody knows that Gary passed away unexpectedly on Friday night. Gary was the president and CEO of Visitor Orlando and was scheduled to be here today to help us declare it National Travel and Tourism Week. And Gary's death is a major blow to our community, to our tourism industry, an industry that he helped to make number one in the entire world. His passing is incredibly sad for many, many people who got to know him, not just as the leader of the tourism community, but as a father, a friend, a family man, just a good man and a community-minded man. And I certainly include myself in that group. Our thoughts and our prayers go out to his family, his wife Pam, his two daughters, and today we want to take an opportunity to pause just for a moment and recognize the life of Gary Sane and his contribution to the tourism community here in central Florida and to the quality of life in general for all that live in central Florida. So if you could all join me in a moment of silence in memory of Gary Sane. Thank you. So it falls to Paul's responsibility. Paul Tang is Chair of CFH LA and along with some members of Gary's team at Visitor Orlando, we are honored to declare it National Travel and Tourism Week. And Paul, did you want to come up and make a few remarks, and then I'll read the proclamation?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. We are all here with very heavy hearts as we have really lost a great friend, community leader, and more important, he's a visionary that have drive success for us. But the end of the day, I think our mission is really as a chairman of Visitor Orlando at this point is continues his legacy, continue the plan he laid in front of us so that we can continue the path of success. I do appreciate the support from everybody, not only from here, but the community at large. Thank you, appreciate.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a proclamation. City of Orlando, whereas travel matters to the nation's economic prosperity and its image abroad, to business wealth and individual travelers, and whereas travel to and within the United States provides significant economic benefits for the nation, and whereas travel is among the largest private sector employees in the United States, supporting over 14 million jobs in 2010, and whereas travelers spending directly generated tax revenues of $117 billion for federal, state, and local governments, and whereas travel to Orlando and central Florida infuses more than $28 billion in spending by visitors, employs more than 355,000 people, and provides our local and state governments with $7 billion in tax revenues annually, and whereas international travel to the United States is the nation's largest single export industry, and whereas meetings, events, and incentive travel are core business functions that help companies strengthen business performance, and whereas leisure travel, which accounts for more than three-quarters of all trips taken in the United States, spurs countless benefits to travelers' creativity, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, relationships, and wellness, and whereas travel is a catalyst that moves the national economy forward. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando hereby do proclaim May 5th through the 13th, 2012 as Tourism and Travel Week in the City of Orlando and urge all citizens of Orlando to join me in this special observance with appropriate events and commemorations. I'm going to have this amended and have it actually say Gary Sane Travel and Tourism Week in the City of Orlando. Okay, we're now going to make recognition of National Salvation Army Week. So Marcia, could you come do the honors, please?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer and City Commissioners. Today, we are very pleased to recognize, as Mayor Dyer mentioned, National Salvation Army Week, and here to give a brief overview is Major Andrew Kelly, the Area Commander of the Salvation Army in Orange and Osceola Counties, as well as some of his, members of his staff. Major Kelly has served as an officer for more than 23 years in the Salvation Army in various appointments across the country, and today he is Commander here and has been since June of 2007, and he'll give you just an overview of what the week means. Major Kelly?
Thank you, Marcia. National Salvation Army Week is an opportunity for us to celebrate the ways in which the Salvation Army has been able to impact communities around the country. And in Orlando, the Salvation Army's had a presence since 1920, and it's been a continuous 92 years of service and providing for members of our community here in Orlando, and that is over and over with new leadership from time to time. And the pledge of the Salvation Army is to continue to serve the Orlando area even though there is going to be a change in leadership. In June, I will be moving to Washington DC and being replaced from Memphis, Tennessee by Major Mark Woodcock, but the Salvation Army's work will continue as if there was no change whatsoever, and we make that pledge, and we thank you for this recognition.
Thank you, Major, and I'm going to read the proc, but before I do that, we want to acknowledge your service here and your work that you'll be doing in Washington DC, and I thought it'd be appropriate if I asked Commissioner Stewart to offer a few words in that regard.
Thank you, Mayor, and Andy, it's good to see you, and I'm going to miss you. It's often you don't get a chance to know much about somebody until they leave, and I get a chance to read his bio. I've never read your bio until this past week and didn't realize that you're a Minister of Music and got a BA. Andy came to this town a few years ago. We had a chance to become kindred spirits, and we have served together faithfully. It's been a wonderful opportunity to serve with you and Amy. He continues his work, started in, I guess, Texas and then DC, I'm looking at this, Virginia, Kentucky, Tennessee, Arkansas, Oklahoma, Orlando, and now back to DC, and is uniquely gifted to be able to lead with the Salvation Army. It's, I have now been a director of a nonprofit longer than three of you guys. I wish you'd stay for just a little bit longer because each one is unique and different and bring unique gifts to our community, especially the gift of caring. So we're going to miss you on behalf of me from the Christian Service Center and behalf of this city. We're going to miss the work that you've done and the way you've led us in a wonderful spirit, and we welcome the Woodcocks and look forward to serving with them as well. So I want to say a few words, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner, well said. Proclamation, City of Orlando, whereas following a dream of ministering to those with physical and spiritual needs, evangelists William and Catherine Booth founded the Salvation Army in 1865, and whereas throughout countless acts of service, members of the Salvation Army continue the compassionate tradition of helping whoever, wherever there is hunger, disease, destitution, and spiritual need, and whereas the Salvation Army provides humanitarian relief and spiritual guidance in 125 countries around the world, serves more than 28 million Americans, and whereas the Salvation has been faithfully and lovingly serving the citizens of the City of Orlando since January 8th, 1920, and whereas the Salvation Army is celebrating the 58th Annual National Salvation Army Week, which was declared in 1954 by President Dwight D. Eisenhower, and whereas the City of Orlando urges all citizens to support the soldiers and outreach ministry of the Salvation Army. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando hereby do proclaim May 14th through the 18th, 2012 as National Salvation Army in the City of Orlando.[835.81][835.81](applause) Next up is Jim Hunt to introduce recognition of the City of Orlando's Workplace Giving Campaign by the Heart of Florida United Way. Jim?
Thanks. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As you probably recall from our March 12th meeting, we had an extraordinary season this year with our workplace giving. We exceeded not only our monetary goal, but our participatory goal, and here with us today is Bob Haight, the Senior Vice President with Heart of Florida United Way, and he would like to extend his personal recognition to the mayor and city council.
Thank you, Jim. Mayor, Commissioners, Administration, on behalf of Bob Brown, our President and CEO, and David Fuller, our campaign chairman, I'd like to extend a community's appreciation for the city campaign. Your workplace campaign raised over $440,000 for the residents of our community, and I think that deserves a great deal of recognition and applause, so thank you.[933.25][933.25](applause) The City of Orlando is known for partnerships, and part of our partnership is collective community impact, and I'd just like to say how much we appreciate as a community partnering with the city with Project Courage, a partnership with Mayor Dyer, Chief Rooney, which is really reaching out to create awareness and education as it relates to potential victims of domestic violence. I had the privilege with Chief Rooney, actually, on Day of Caring to put door hangers on doors so people would know who to call in our community. I think Paramore Kids Zone is another example of collective community impact, as well as the Interface School Turnaround School Project, now known as Together for Tomorrow, and the city's investment in 211, which helped us last year reach over 160,000 residents in the tri-county area. So on behalf of the entire community, Heart of Florida United Way, I'd like to present the mayor, the commission, and all the employees who participated in the workplace campaign,
Okay, Marcia, you are back up to help us recognize our letter carriers.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, and all of our special guests today. The city is very pleased to partner with the National Association of Letter Carriers' local chapter, and their many partners here today to help alleviate hunger in our community through their food drive, which happens on Saturday, May 12th. The City of Orlando's Postmaster, Jean Lovejoy, is here with us today, and Jean oversees nearly 900 employees and is responsible for all postal operations in the City of Orlando. I understand she began her career as a letter carrier, and now she is the postmaster of our city. And she's here today with her partners who are asking us and inviting us to join the community in support of this drive on May 12th. This time, she will give a brief overview for you and the mayor, and Mayor, if you would read the proclamation afterwards.
Good afternoon to the mayor and the commissioners and everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. Just to give you a little overview about the Stamp Out Hunger, I did start off as a letter carrier, and it was a great honor, and I'm privileged to be here as the postmaster today. On Saturday, May 12th, 2012, the Campbell Soup Company will team up with our carriers, the National Association of Letter Carriers, to collect food, donations, and provide assistance to millions of Americans who are starving today. The Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is a nationwide effort that provides food to local food banks and pantries. Faced with depletion over the summer, the food bank across the country continued to experience demand for emergency food assistance. Celebrating 20 years anniversary this year, the Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive, nation's largest single-day food drive, having collected more than 1 billion pounds of food since the inception in 1993. And I can remember my son was only three years old back then, and he was running behind the trucks helping collect food at that time. He's 23 today and still out helping. Campbell Soup Company will cook off this year's food drive with their pledge to donate 1 million pounds of food to Feeding America. A recent survey conducted by Feeding America, the nation's largest domestic hunger relief organization, found that nearly half, 46% of the household represented, have chosen to pay, have to choose between paying their utility bills or purchasing food. Now, all of everybody in here asks, "How can you help?" It's really simple. Helping Step Out Hunger is easy as checking your mailbox this Saturday. Just leave a bag of non-perishable food with the letter carrier where they would normally deliver your mail, they still will deliver your mail, but we ask you to leave your non-perishable items inside the mailbox. The carrier will pick them up, and we will have them transported to the local food banks. Now you ask, "What can you leave?" You could leave canned soups, canned meats and fish, canned vegetables, fruits and juices, box goods such as cereal and pasta and rice. Now for more information, it's really simple. You could ask your carrier, who you probably see every day, or you could stop by the local post office, or you can always visit at www.helppstepouthunger.com. It's really just that simple. Now I ask everyone else to come up and join me.
City of Orlando proclamation. Whereas many central Floridians are in need of supplemental food assistance each month, and whereas the National Association of Letter Carriers, in conjunction with the United States Postal Service, National Rural Letter Carriers Association, Heart of Florida United Way, Campbell Soup Company, Second Harvest Food Bank, Valpak, Feeding America, Uncle Bob Self-Storage, AARP, and the Central Florida AFL-CIO are teaming up in an effort to tackle the hunger problem in central Florida, and whereas Public Supermarkets has donated millions of grocery bags for delivery by letter carriers, and whereas the National Association of Letter Carriers' food drive effort is a community-based endeavor, and the food collection will remain in the metro Orlando area, and whereas the City of Orlando is proud to recognize the significant importance of the National Food Drive Day in our community and encourages all residents to donate food, especially as the NALC Food Drive celebrates its 20th anniversary this year. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando hereby do proclaim Saturday, May 12th, 2012, as National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day in the City We canceled our second meeting this month, so that's why we have so many recognitions today all at once for the whole month of May. All right, Marcia, surprise, surprise, you're back up for the month of May as Public Service Recognition Week.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Mayor Dyer, and City Commissioners, and all of our special guests. You see, I'm wearing a button here that says "I love public service," and I do love my work. Today, I'm honored to introduce Dr. Thomas Brier, who is an Assistant Professor in the Department of Public Administration at the University of Central Florida, where he teaches undergraduate, graduate, and doctoral courses, and his teaching and research focuses on public participation with government, citizen engagement, cross-sector collaborations, and ethics. Dr. Brier's work has appeared in numerous publications, and he's also the Director of the UCF Center for Public and Nonprofit Management. Today, though, Dr. Brier is here in another capacity as the local president of the American Society of Public Administrators, where he will be sharing information about Public Service Week. I have to say on a personal note, Dr. Brier has supported us in the development of Orlando Cares as our lead researcher for our landscape analysis in 2010, and continues to work with us on our performance measures. So it's my pleasure to introduce a friend and someone who believes in public service, Dr. Tom Brier.[1473.38][1473.38](applause)
Thank you, Marcia, Mayor, Commissioners. It's really an honor to be here today as the President of the Central Florida Chapter of the American Society for Public Administration, representing the men and women in Orlando and throughout central Florida who have committed their careers and much of their lives to the service of others. And this is what Public Service Recognition Week is all about. It's a week that's recognized around the nation. It provides us the opportunity as a community to step back and look at those around us who are working to strengthen our communities through government, through faith organizations, through nonprofit organizations like the United Way, like the Salvation Army, and other civil society and voluntary organizations, to look at the contributions that they are making to our way of life and to enhancing our quality of life here in central Florida and beyond. In this environment, in this political environment, there's much debate happening, as there should be, about the role of government, what the role of government should be in our lives, in our communities, in our society, but from the perspective of recognizing public service, it's important that we not confuse legitimate debate about the role of government with recognizing or providing blanket criticism, in some cases, of those who work in the name of public service. So that's our task here this week to recognize public service. The American Society for Public Administration locally is celebrating this event on Wednesday evening at 6:00 PM right upstairs in this building, in the overlook room. Everybody is invited, the commissioner, the mayor, everyone in the audience, 6:00 PM. It's a free event reception where we'll be recognizing 15 individuals and organizations nominated for public service awards, and we'll be awarding in four different categories. So encourage your participation, and you can see us if you'd like to get an "I love public service" sticker. We have plenty available, so please see us.
Thank you. City of Orlando proclamation. Whereas since 1985, Public Service Recognition Week has been celebrated the first week of May to honor the men and women who serve our nation as federal, state, county, and local government employees to ensure that our government is the best in the world, and whereas these men and women with their commitment to excellence and diversity of skills take not only their jobs, but oaths to serve and are an invaluable resource, and whereas public service is a noble calling involving a wide variety of challenging and rewarding professions, and whereas Public Service Recognition Week strives to inform our citizens about the quality of people in government, their commitment to high ethical standards, and the value of the services they perform, and whereas this commemoration is an opportunity for all citizens of our community to pay tribute to the profession and spirit of public service and to express our deep appreciation for the many contributions public employees make to our daily lives. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, do hereby proclaim the first week of May each year, commencing in 2012 and each year thereafter, as Public Service All right, Brenda, come on up. We are going to have a presentation to honor one of my favorite people and favorite charitable organizations. I'm going to let Brenda do the intros.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners, and invited guests. It is truly an honor to recognize Wayne Dent charities for its ongoing support of the Paramore Kids Zone project. Paramore Kids Zone aims to reduce juvenile crime, teen pregnancy, and high school dropout rates in the Paramore community. We are here to thank Wayne Dent charities for its recent $10,000 donation to PKZ for 37 youth to tour colleges in Florida, Georgia, and Alabama, and sponsor several youth baseball teams this season. We are joined here today with PKZ staff, along with CEO Leonard Williams and Community Relations liaison, Cran Riley. Wayne Dent Charities works one-on-one to provide direct access to poor, elderly, and homeless, and to provide relief to distressed individuals. Since 2006, Wayne Dent Charities donated $70,000 to the Orlando Community Youth Trust for the Paramore Kids Zone Project. Thank you, Wayne Dent, for providing Paramore youth the opportunity to walk on a college campus, meet college administrators, learn history, and dream that college can be reached if they study hard and make positive choices. As we were having a staff meeting discussing youth baseball in the PKZ office, Crain Riley stopped by, heard the need, and pledged to support and sponsor our baseball in the neighborhood, which includes uniforms, cleats, socks, and equipment for Paramore four youth baseball teams. PKZ children are having a blast learning the fundamentals of baseball and enjoying the sport. Practices are held on Monday and Thursday evenings at Grand Avenue Baseball Field. The City Youth Baseball League Season Opening Day was held on Saturday, April 28th. CAO Byron Brooks threw the first pitch, and Ricky Weeks, proud father of two Major League Baseball players, Ricky and Jamil, and President of the Orlando Monarchs Florida Collegiate Summer League Team, gave words of encouragement to 200 youth. Thank you, Wayne Dent Charities, for your $10,000 donation to Paramore Kids Zone. We look forward to your ongoing support. Mayor, can you call upon our guests? Thank you. Lisa and PK staff, will you join me, please?
And Leonard and Crain. Okay, and last but not least, I want to call on Richard Forbes, who's our Historic Preservation Officer, who's going to give a brief presentation regarding National Historic Preservation Month, and then present some awards and plaques to award recipients. Commissioner Sheehan, why don't you come and join me down here?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer and Commissioners. May, as it is every May, is National Preservation Month, and the theme this year is Discover America's Hidden Gems. Throughout our nation, communities are celebrating the significant places that have contributed to our American experience. Orlando is very fortunate to have a great number of treasured historic gems that help tell the story of the history of our city and its people. The annual Historic Preservation Awards Program recognizes the place that our historic resources have within our city beautiful, and the hard work that goes into rehabilitating and preserving these resources so that they may be enjoyed today and for many generations to come. The winner of the 2012 Historic Preservation Award for Best Residential Infill Project is 1612 East Washington Street. The owners are Vivian and Tom Ward. The original house that was on this site was built in the 1950s and was a non-contributing house in the historic district. The house was in poor condition and had been added on too badly over the years, and the decision was made to demolish the house and rebuild. Architect David Runnels designed a house for Tom and Vivian that is a modern interpretation of the bungalow style and blends very well with the many historic mungolos that are found in the Lake La Sona Historic District. One note is the broad, open front porch with no central supports, which is a typical feature of the bungalow style. The interior has wonderful craftsmen details. The detached garage is typical for the pattern, the historic pattern of development found in the Lake La Sona Historic District, and this creates a private courtyard in the rear. The house blends well with the other houses in the neighborhood and is a great addition. Thank you to Tom and Vivian Ward for their insight and appropriate new infill house that is a welcome addition to the Lake La Sona District. Next, we have two Centennial Building Awards. These awards are given to buildings that are turning or have turned 100 years of age, and that have been well-maintained, and that have historic and architectural integrity. The first Centennial Award is for the home of Patty and Chad Lalonde at 206 East Amelia Street in the Lake Eyola Heights Historic District. The house was built in 1911 for our in Lockhart, along with a very similar twin house next door. The materials came from the Lockhart lumberyard. Records show that by 1923, the house was owned by T.A. Langford. That's Mayor Carl Langford's father. So I can just imagine a young Mayor Langford getting up to all sorts of shenanigans around the house and neighborhood. The Colonial Revival House was purchased by the Lalondes in 2009 after the house had sat vacant for a couple of years and was needing much repair work. The Lalondes have continued to restore the house slowly and thoughtfully, both inside and out. One notable feature that you can find in the dining room is that the original burlwood wainscot has never been painted, still in its original condition. So thank you to Chad and Patty Lalonde for their careful rehabilitation and stewardship of their home, which is 100 years old. Our next Centennial Building Award is for 1023 East Livingston Street. This is owned by Jeff and Josette Wyble. The house was built in 1909 for John Otto Frye, or Freeze. Freeze came to Orlando in 1871 from Sweden. Freeze was appointed County Surveyor for Orange Brevard and St. Lucie Counties. He was also appointed as US Surveyor and made the first census of the Seminole Indians in 1900. Locally, he surveyed Greenwood Cemetery with Sam Robinson in 1880, sorry. His daughter, Kenneth Freeze, was the author of "In the Long, Long Ago," which was a history of Orlando, and she lived in the home until her death in 1945. One of her sisters had actually returned to Sweden, and in March of this year, Josette noticed an elderly woman standing on the sidewalk looking at the house. It turned out that this was John Otto's great-granddaughter, who had come back to Orlando to find out more about her connections with our city. She had won a competition and ticket on KLM Airlines after writing an essay about her desire to find out more about Orlando and her great-grandfather, John Otto. Of course, there was a much exchange of information, and now the Wybles have a great deal more letters and stories about the family that built the house. The Wybles have restored the front porches and also made sensitive additions to the rear of the house, and added a garage in the same style as the main house. Thank you to Josette and Jeff for their careful rehabilitation and stewardship of their historic home. Now if the award winners will come forward, and Mayor Dyer and Commissioner Sheehan, we will hand out some beautiful... One last, very quick note. Wanted to point out that Orlando Historic Preservation Competition for the 2013 calendar is now starting, and it's going to feature the Lake Adair-Lake Concord National Register Historic District, which was designated on December 30th, 2011. So please, everyone, join in the competition this year. We have until July 13th to get those photos in, so, thanks.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
That concludes our awards and presentations, so we're going to take about a 30-second break to let those who are not staying for the remainder of the meeting safely exit. Okay, then we will move into the Mayor's update. Wow, it's that time of year again, Commissioner Linum, you have a birthday this week, on Friday, so happy birthday to you. And in our tradition up here, why don't we all serenade Commissioner Linum with a happy birthday tune? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Commissioner Linum. Happy birthday to you. That's right, 45, very nice. We had... We canceled the second meeting in May, so there were several scheduling conflicts, so this is Commissioner Diamond's last meeting, and we want to thank you for your 10 years of service to the citizens of Orlando, Commissioner. I was out of town a couple of weekends ago, and I missed the big Hall of Fame ceremony at Edgewater High School, but our own Byron Brooks, where are you Byron, was inducted. Byron's a 1979 graduate, an Edgewater Eagle, and he was honored for making a difference in our community in two different categories, for his community involvement and for his professional achievements. So congratulations, Byron, you're very deserving. And I will mention that I think Commissioner Stewart is the only member of his family that has not been inducted into the Hall. No, there might be, the majority have been inducted at any rate. Okay, and Byron was the second member of his family inducted into the Hall of Fame. His sister was also inducted last year. I want to congratulate and recognize our Fleet Division for their hard work and excellence. They were recently named as one of the top 100 Government Fleet Operations in the country by Government Fleet Magazine, and one of the 100 Best Fleets for 2012. And you know, we have such quality in the services that we provide to the City of Orlando, and I know having one of the best fleet divisions is not the sexiest thing that we do here at the city government, but it's important in terms of the services that we're able to provide to our citizens. So we should always be proud when one of our employee groups is honored in that fashion, or actually recognized in that faction. Items of note from the Consent Agenda. On today's agenda, we have a five-year lease agreement for the club at NBA City for the restaurant space, the last remaining restaurant space in the Amway Center. The restaurant is expected to open in October, hopefully for the beginning of the new NBA season, and will further activate the Amway Center and Sherif Street. And yes, I've been kidding Mark Schleub all week about the fact that it does have a dirt floor, and they will be building that out, and any new construction that doesn't have an immediate use, usually the floor remains dirt, so they can stub out the utilities in the appropriate place, instead of having to break the floor out to redo that when the floor plan is different than was anticipated. May is Building Safety Month, a public awareness campaign to help individuals, family, and businesses understand what it takes to create and sustain safe and sustainable structures. And I want to take this moment to thank all of our city employees, from economic development to public work, who work to ensure the safety and sustainability of our structures in the City of Orlando. This meeting is the only city council meeting in this month of May, so I want to mention, although it's going to be in the third week of May, National Small Business Week begins on May 21st, and I think we all know that small businesses are the backbone of our city and our national economy, they drive our local economy. There are 27 million small businesses in America, and they create between 60% and 80% of all new jobs nationwide, and 93% of the businesses in Orlando have less than 50 employees. So I want to invite everybody to enjoy celebrating National Small Business Week. Today, we are likewise supporting small businesses in our community by approving a number of small business assistance programs, a business assistance program agreement with Big Italy, which is a new Italian restaurant on I Drive, a small business facade program agreement with Jaeger Eye Institute on Mark Street, and a small business facade program agreement with FM Automotive on OBT. So I want to recognize Paulo Samoz from Big Italy, Cheryl Jaeger from the Jaeger Eye Institute, and Frank Mendoza from FM Automotive, who are with us today. If you'd all stand and be recognized. Also, we are approving a QTI resolution with Zero Chaos, one of our downtown headquarter operations. I see Harold out there. Zero Chaos expects to expand into another 8,500 square foot space next door in the CNL, CNL 2, and they anticipate creating 24 new jobs over the next two years. Harold, would you stand up and let us recognize you? You're one of the companies that has continued to prosper even in spite of the recession, so thank you so much. With that, we will move on to the Consent Agenda, and the Consent Agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our Commissioners an opportunity to comment, as I did, on various items on the Consent Agenda, and also to update you on items of importance from their individual districts. We rotate who goes first in order, and today, we're beginning with District 5, Commissioner Linum.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Congratulations, Harold, and to all the small businesses, because that's one of my number one priorities when we are doing this up here. 9% of what we do is catering, but it's that 10% that keep you back, done, done. But this is good news, thank you. Mayor Dyer, I want to start my comments regarding Gary Zing. I know he, as a council, about where to recognize his contributions, but we each know him maybe a different way, and he was someone unlike we had called often when we were bringing groups to Orlando for meetings or going other places for meetings.
Meetings, and he and his staff, Zeta and all the rest of the guys, which is absolutely superb in trying to serve our community. Gary was a good listener, and in terms of when there's a problem, as I normally find one with most things, but the point was, he would make it better, he would change it, he would do something about it. And to die suddenly, for someone like Gary, who is a health nut, and he was better than most of us, he was at least a vegetarian, I mean, I'd love meat, and I'm praying, Lord, help me. But Gary was a unique individual, and I love that, what was that thing he did? Smile Orlando?
Orlando makes you smile.
Orlando makes you smile.
Yeah, yeah, that little, he always had a gimmick or something to draw attention to Orlando, and I think that is what I remembered most. But I think just a few weeks ago, I just mentioned to council, we were in DC, and I was, he was there for some reason, I was there for another, and I said, "Gary, we have got to stay on top of All-Stars. We've got to bring it back in three years." Of course, he said, "Oh, we can't do three years, we got to do five." And of course, in DC, we're going to start a little debate about how we can do All-Stars. And I think five years is the reasonable time because of just the economy and the scale of what we've got to do. I'll really miss him. He was one of those people I loved talking to and looking for the next thing he was going to do in tourism. So to his family and to all of our tourism people, I just want you to know, we all are mourning the death of a really neat guy. Now, for a few other announcements regarding the community, I want to, as usual, say a special thanks to our chiefs in OPD, fire, who came out to celebrate the 45th anniversary of Clear Lake Neighborhood Association on Saturday. And those people did not care about the chief's uniforms, they had them carrying pots and pans and moving stuff around. It was really nice to see the chief of police trying to walk around with a big pot, trying to get it situated. But I want to say a real personal thanks to you, as usual, to both of... But I want to say a real personal thanks to you, as usual, to both of you for helping when neighborhoods call. The Clear Lake neighborhood is one of those great neighborhoods in Orlando, and this is no exaggeration, where crime is low, the stability is high, and just almost all of them are the original owners, with a few, and I think Chief, the chiefs and I were talking, how do you maintain that high home ownership, and maybe the second generations for some of them are there. But thank you, and we hope to celebrate with other neighborhoods in the future. We had the horses, we had the motors, we had the fire engine, what else did we have? A whole bunch of stuff. Oh, yeah, the dogs were coming as I was leaving for the game, and Georgette, Georgie, the lady, the neighborhood lady, I just want to say thanks. And I will not tell you what Chief Mills, I won't tell you what he said about you, Chief, but thank you. Then on to another announcement, I'd like to, of course, bring to our attention on just what, Tuesday night or Wednesday night, no, Friday night, what, was it Monday? Was it Friday night, the law enforcement memorial?
Yes.
As beautiful as ever, and the honor we pay those lost in the line of duty, and even those who've served us well and are no longer with us. So I just always feel that's something honorable about our country and about our community that we do each year. May twenty-second, and I've just had that confirmed with Senator Siplin, we talked about it this morning regarding Sun Rail, we had a great workshop, but the one thing that has been the greatest struggle for us locally is getting our jobs. And I will partner with Senator Siplin and the Blueprint Office regarding the job fear May twenty-second, ten to four PM. Mayor Diamond and I have had, oh, I don't know how many, they weren't job fears, they were community meetings with contractors, I believe, that's how we put it right, where we were really trying to jumpstart local contractors to bid on the jobs and see what was available. We've done that since the very beginning, so right now, we may be looking at people, and I think we're going to approve a day labor type service here today, people getting those jobs. So with those jobs coming on regarding Sun Rail, this new company will have a great opportunity, all of them, to get people into jobs. So for that issue, that is it. I just want to make a great, a comment regarding the agenda. On our agenda item, I think it was A1, regarding the certification board, when the economy goes tink up, sort of certification for MWBE has a few challenges, and I just want to acknowledge Dr. Nadi on that board for really holding that fort down, because there are a lot of fraudulent applications, and to try and deal with that in a way that honors our application process, and I just want to, her and all the other members, but we really, I really want to just call her out for the great job. And on agenda item B2, we have broadband technology with UCF, starting off its second year, dealing with the paramour kids to teach them the new technologies using our iPads and storytelling and all the things that youngsters can do, and I just happened to be at Jones High Honor Society induction, and one of the youngsters in this program was inducted into the Honor Society. So I know knowing technology is a great help when you're doing your homework and getting those things done. I want to, with the housing program we've got here, this is our third or fourth contractor. I know Deborah and I talked about it on that fifteen-ten Rock Lake. I pray that this is done right, if not, we need to tear that house down, or get somebody we know real well here locally to get it done. But this is, I'm getting a lot of calls on that house to get it completed, and of course, to try and get it sold. Of course, some people didn't know about the club at NBA, that space, that vacant space there, that was the original space I really was talking with the magic about for drafts, and somebody else sort of got it wrong regarding the space where drafts is. We really wanted a good restaurant there, and I think this was a home run, and I'm very happy for them. And I think on F1, the homeless piece, these are kind of routine things we do, I want to congratulate the Housing Authority at least for the moving this HUD dollars onto our homeless emergency assistance and rapid transit program. A lot of homeless families are transitioned into housing before they, for years sometimes, before they are able to stabilize their jobs and whatnot, so the city of Orlando does a great job working with the homeless and moving the dollars, federal dollars, through the city to places it's needed, whether it's CDBG or CHIP or housing or whatever. So I still want to congratulate that department for the great work they do. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Six, Commissioner Rings.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to extend my condolences to Gary Sein's family and his wife Pam. Gary Sein was an impeccable man, he was very polite, always kind, and he had a passion for tourism in Orlando, which really spread throughout Orange County, Osceola County, Seminole County, and it was because of his great work and his great dedication to our community, and specifically Orlando and how he just kept Orlando at the forefront as relates with tourism. And with that, Gary can be really the one that's responsible for the fifty-plus million people that come into the Orlando area through the kind of hard work that he and his crew, his team, did to bring in visitors in Orlando and the central Florida area. And then also Gary was a great dresser. The man was just good-looking and very compassionate and kind, as I've stated before, and Gary's wife Pam, she too is a jewel and a great person, and I know that Gary's going to be sorely missed, not only by his family, but also by the Orlando community. And then in the agenda, well, before I go to the agenda too, I'd like to say congratulations to Thomas Chapman. Thomas, are you still here? Okay, congratulations, the new incoming International Downtown Association President. I don't know when you actually take office, September, but congratulations on being the incoming, and I know you're going to represent Orlando very well, and you two have been a genuine person for Orlando, and you've brought some great attention to downtown, so please continue the great work that you're doing. Items C4 for the Business Assistance Program with the Big Italy project there on International Drive, fifty-seven hundred International Drive, this is a huge project, and you guys have really stepped up with the renovation of that particular plaza. There've been so many things there, and you guys are really making it look very good. You've got some clean colors to it, which is great, and it's going to attract a lot of people there, and when you're talking about over a hundred different types of pizzas, that's a lot of pizza, and also fifty pasta dishes, you know, that's huge. And you're in a great location, too, you're right there on that corner, great location, but I'm concerned about your parking, because once you guys get open and become so popular, y'all might have to have shuttle buses, you know, to shuttle the people in. But you're, congratulations on a great job that you're doing, and the amount of money that you're really putting in that community shows that you really care and that you're going to be there for a long time, so I'm hoping that you will be there a long time. Thank you very much. And then item C6, the Small Business Facade Program there at, it's actually eleven nineteen South Orange Blossom Trail and not eleven oh nine, Mayor.
Okay. Madam Clark, if you could make that change.
This is a great opportunity for us, the Mendoza's, Franklin and Jennifer, thank you for thinking of the city and thinking of upgrading the Orange Blossom Trail area, and specifically right where you are, I think that's going to be a prime property, too, for you, you're going to look good with your automotive collision business there, so you're going to stand out, and obviously you're going to get more customers. So that little building that's just north of you, do you own that? Yeah, the old barber shop? Okay, all right, so we're looking for some great things on that, too. So you can tie it all in together to really beautify the Orange Blossom Trail area there near Gore Street. And then also Harold Mills has left, but item C15, the QTI Qualified Target Industry Program for Zero Chaos is a great opportunity for us, and specifically for their commitment to Orlando, and I know they could have gone anywhere else, but they're still looking at Orlando as a place that they're going to call home. So again, congratulations on that. And then on April twenty-seventh, at the Dr. James R. Smith Center, Marlon Potey and Maurice Hampton and Akiva Wilson, the Smith Center staff, they were very supportive of the Smith Center Wildcats, and the Smith Center Wildcats had their awards banquet that night, and head coach Luther Blackshear and his team of coaches celebrated this with a lot of the young people, the youth from ages five to fourteen years old, and also the female cheerleaders were on hand to show some support for that event. But one thing that was very special about this particular banquet is their guest speaker, and the guest speaker was Coach Brian Jenkins, the head coach for the Bethune-Cookman University, and he was right there in the Smith Center, and he had some great things to say to the young people and also their parents. One was, the right thing will be long-lasting and overcome your setbacks. And the next was, do the right thing and not necessarily the best thing, but he wanted to implant something in the minds of the kids, and he had his assistant coach was there with him, too. But the Smith Center staff and Coach Blackshear have a lot to be thankful for, because they do have some great support from the parents of those young children, and to see the children dressed up, to sit down and receive their awards was a great, great thing. And then, of course, on April twenty-sixth, One Community Many Faces in honor of Albert T. Nelson, thank you Marcia Hope Goodwin and Regina McGill for your part of that history, too, because as a former director of the Human Relations Office, it means so much that we continue this legacy and we continue helping people throughout our community, specifically as relates with housing issues and employment issues regarding discrimination. So this was a great event that was held at the Doubletree Orlando Downtown, and it was very well attended, the place was packed, and it was a full day's regional fair housing summit, and you had the Assistant Secretary of HUD that was there, that was the guest speaker. And his name is John Tresvina, and he's the Assistant Secretary for Fair Housing and equal opportunity for the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. But this was a great event and a very historical event, and I hope, Frank Billingsley, that we just continue some great things with the Human Relations Office. Run, Walk, or Sprint, three-point-one miles, the tenth annual I Drive 5K Run, it's going to be held at Point Orlando on May the twelfth, two thousand and twelve, so rally your team together in support of I Drive. The YMCA Aquatic Center, Learn to Swim Scholarship Program, and the race starts at seven-thirty AM, there will be a free kids' dash at eight forty-five AM, parking will be free in the Point Orlando Garage, and best race prizes in town, I Drive Attractions, restaurant, shopping, movie tickets, and more. And you can register online at www dot internationaldriveorlando dot com, so come out and take advantage of this particular program. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move down to District One, Commissioner Diamond.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I also would like to add my condolences and thoughts to Gary Sein's family, his coworkers. I know he's going to be sorely missed, and I think, I think he's leaving a big hole in the tourism community, but hopefully they, the other good people in that community will step up and fill the gap, but a terrible loss, terrible surprise, and our thoughts and prayers go out to Gary's family. As the mayor mentioned, my term as an Orlando City Commissioner ends May thirty-first, so today is my last meeting as the Commissioner for District One, so I just wanted to make a few comments, and first of all, I wanted to thank the citizens of District One and the city of Orlando for letting me serve. I think public service is an honorable profession, it's been the honor of my life to serve and to have had the privilege to serve in this capacity, and I really appreciate the opportunity that was given to me and for being graced for the journey that I've been able to be on. I've always said, public service is a terrific opportunity to be involved, make a difference, and meet great people, it has certainly been that, and at the same time, it's, I think it's always, it's always something to reflect back on what you've done and some of the accomplishments and some of the things I think we all can be proud of over the past ten years. And just a few things I wanted to mention, I think, I think there's a lot we as a city can be proud of, but I just wanted to highlight a few, a few thoughts, a few comments, a few things. One of my passions is parks, and in the district, I'm very proud of the fact that we're able to preserve and protect, and now we're cleaning up thirty-five acres of environmentally sensitive land in the Conway area next to Barber Park. Very, very proud of the many much-needed improvements we've made at parks and recreational facilities in the district, be it Delaney Park, Wade View Park, Blankner, and really throughout, reached an agreement with the Lake Nona developer to set aside hundreds of acres for what will be the largest park in the entire city of Orlando. And then I'm also proud of a number of other district projects, things that may not get a lot of attention, but things which really make people's lives better, make neighborhoods better, things like putting in sidewalks, widening roads, like Conway and Narcusi, things like traffic signals, traffic calming, things to make neighborhoods safer, and things to improve our quality of life. I'm also very proud of some of the community-wide projects, both in the district and outside the district, that we've seen. I'm very proud of Medical City, which I think will add, you know, not just thousands of jobs and not just opportunity, but I think will improve the quality of healthcare in our community. I'm also proud that we supported and finally got commuter rail, I think that will go a long way towards helping with our transportation problems, helping our economy, and will be a much-needed boost for downtown, along with many other good projects that are going to benefit downtown and the entire region. It's been said that we vote as many and succeed as one, and in that spirit, I'd like to thank each and every member of the council and the mayor for serving with me and for allowing me the privilege to serve with them, and thank everybody, all of them, as well as the many hard-working, dedicated men and women of the city, no matter what your job is, for all you do to make our lives better, to keep us safe, to improve our quality of life, and to exemplify what public service is all about. We heard a little while ago about public service and how important it is, and I couldn't agree more, and whether it's working for the city or being involved in one of the many groups in this town, I think it's critical, and I think it makes Orlando the city that it is. I'd like to extend a special thanks, since public safety is the number-one job of our city, I'd like to extend a special thanks to, excuse me, the three individuals who've served as the liaison for District One since I was a commissioner, and that would be Officers Ernest Smith, John Keefe, and Edgar Malave, who serve so wonderfully and capably as our district liaison. I'd like to give I'd like to give special thanks to Jeannie Wilson and Sandy Johnson for doing a terrific job in running the District 1 office, solving problems, putting on special events, and really were doing a terrific job for the citizens of Orlando and the citizens of District 1. And lastly, I'd like to thank my wife and my children for their unending and uncounted sacrifices that allowed me to do this job. I appreciate all they've done, all the sacrifices they've made, and I wanted to thank them again. And thank you all for this wonderful opportunity.
Okay, we'll move on to District 2. Commissioner Ortiz.
Well, now that I'm speechless. Thank you, Commissioner, and it's been an honor serving, actually.
Thank you.
We had our moments, but you kept me on check, too, so I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. I would also like to express my condolences to Mrs. Gary Sainz, his daughters, his family. I'm still in shock, you know, it's hard to believe. A few days ago, we were talking, we were talking about plans for the Summer in Corridor trip to Columbia and whatnot, and we're already trying to organize a meeting. So it came to a great shock to me and to everybody, his passing. But our prayers are with our families, his families and his friends. Moving along to other items of the district. I'd like to welcome and congratulate, once again, Mr. Tony Monius. He's the owner and executive chef of Ceviche House. It's a new restaurant located on the Summer in Corridor, right next to the old Perkins. So for those of you that have not gone down to the Summer in Corridor lately, it's a great place, very classy. They had their big opening on March 26th. They had a flamenco couple dancing, and they have Spanish music. It was very classy. The food is awesome. There's another item being added to the Summer in Corridor, as it's being revitalized, and I think most people will enjoy it. So if you get a chance, stop by. And this is a free advertisement. On Monday, April 30th, I had the honor of, on behalf of Mayor Dyer, to welcome the World Harmony International Torch representatives, as well as giving them a proclamation from the city. Runners from several countries were here to bring this torch through America. World Harmony International promotes unity and peace around the world. On Tuesday, I was able to attend Mr. Ronald Blocker's retirement celebration. What a great, great party. Sad to see him leave, but he leaves a great legacy among all of us. So congratulations on your retirement, Mr. Blocker, and I wish you the best. I know you'll find something else to do, because you're a busy man. Wednesday, May 2nd, we celebrated the Central Florida Heroes Get on the Boss Campaign to benefit the Flores Blood Bank Center. I was able to donate some blood, and I hope a lot of you did as well. It was a great event all through the whole day. I know the mayor was sponsoring also this great event, and it was, all in all, it was a great event. It was fun. It was fun to watch people come in and donating blood, and it was a good place to mingle, too. Good job. Also on Wednesday, the Summer on Business Partnership had a meet-and-mingle event at the Baldwin Fairchild Funeral Home located at 1413 South Summer Boulevard. Over 50 people attended the event. My congratulations to the board of the Summer in Corridor. They're doing a great job, and things are really moving along. Last Friday, I presented a proclamation to Ms. Blanquita Treble from Casa de Mexico in celebration of Cinco de Mayo. Congratulations to her and to her board. They're doing a good job, too. It was a lot of fun. I hope most of you had a moment to celebrate Cinco de Mayo, and there was a lot of events going on downtown. That was fun. Also on Friday, I was able to attend a former deputy chief's Larry Swig's farewell party. And our chief gave a great speech over there. We all laughed, and we had a good time. It was great to see people I worked with during so many years, and it's good to see the faces of those guys, how they have advanced in the police department to higher positions. So I'm very proud of each and every one of them, and very proud of Chief Swig, who's moving to a great position himself. So. And on Saturday, I co-sponsored, along with Hispanic Health Initiatives, a health fair at the Dover Shores Community Center. I want to thank Mrs. Josephine Mercado and her staff for always being on top of issues that have to do with health in our community. The event was a success. More than 300 people were there. On the agenda, I understand that Item C-14 is being moved to New Business, so we'll discuss that. Item I-7, I want to congratulate Gomer's Construction on the approving award of the contract for the construction of the Englewood Park Playground. We are taking care, our staff have done such a great job, and you guys, needless to say, you guys are always on top of these issues in my district, and in the whole city for that matter. But thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for helping us keeping the infrastructure in place. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move to District 3. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. And let me also share my condolences to Gary's family. Commissioner Lyman is correct. We all knew him in a different way, but I think all of us would agree that we knew nobody who promoted Orlando better and stronger than Gary Kane. And it's going to be a deep passing for all of us. Let me also share a special thanks again to Andy and Amy Kelly for their work here. They came in in a very difficult time in the life of Salvation Army, through some major challenges in fundraising and some major challenges in a building project and some major challenges in our economy, and have done a wonderful job navigating that organization. And they'll be deeply missed. And the words I hear from his successor are just as talented as Andy and Amy Kelly are. We had Dancing on the Drive this past Friday in College Park. It was the second year we've done it. It was a great, great party. Unfortunately, I had to leave early to go and spend time with my daughter, who was having our second grandchild in a week. So I've had two grandchildren in a week, and so, Ed, if you have time, go ahead and run the video. I've got the video of the children being born. Would you go ahead and run that now? No, my daughter would shoot me if I did that. But there was a moment, everybody thought I was actually going to do that. Last Wednesday, we welcomed Pierce Elizabeth Stewart to this world. And then on Saturday night, we welcomed Madison Elizabeth Ball to this town. So we are thrilled. We have two healthy grandchildren, two more healthy grandchildren. That brings our number to four now. But most importantly, that everybody is healthy. And I just got a text that my daughter is home, so I'm kind of tired of visiting the hospital, so I'm kind of glad for that. Commissioner Diamond, thank you for your service. We have our Monday meetings, and I've now moved to the head of the table, so I want you to know that we've now been here long enough, and now I get to go to the head of the table. Thank you very much. Let me cover a couple additional things with here. Commissioner Sheehan, thank you for your kind and heartfelt comments at Chief Swig's retirement. I appreciate that. For those of you who are there, she just did a wonderful job representing the city council and the mayor. Thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate it. This Friday night, Virginia Drive Live Street Party will be back in Ivanhoe Village. I'm just going to run these real quickly, and a chance to check our website, you can find out the rest of these. This Saturday, Orlando Science Center is having a special summer camp open house. It starts at 10 o'clock this Saturday, so please come. Also, the Science Center on the 19th is having an event called the Science of Wine, so please come out and enjoy that. That's always a great event. I think it's the second year they've done that. May 20th at 7:00 is the 8th Annual Baldwin Park Triathlon. I'm sorry, 7:00 a.m. is the 8th Annual Baldwin Park Triathlon. So there'll be some road closures over there, but it'll be another great event. Now, for our District 3 residents, I'm hosting a district-wide crime prevention meeting for our residents to learn more about the city's Neighborhood Watch program and our practices, and to meet our new captain of our North Patrol, Captain Bobby Ozzweda. The meeting will be held on May 23rd at Lock Haven Neighborhood Center at 6:30, and we'll get a chance to welcome him, say so long to Captain Mina, but more importantly, try to recruit and bring people into Neighborhood Watch. We've had some challenges over in the College Park area, not because of our police not doing a good job. They're catching guys and putting them in jail. We're having a challenge making sure that people are calling and doing the basics of Neighborhood Watch. And I want to tell you, Chief Rooney, I appreciate so much what you guys are doing. We're catching guys, as I mentioned in our newsletter recently. We're catching them, we're putting them in jail, and they're out in 48 hours committing the same crimes in our neighborhoods again. So we've got to figure a way to do that. I know you guys are, you guys just hate this going on, and I know you're doing a great job with that. On May 25th at 7:00 a.m. is the annual Bike to Work Day. We're leaving from Dartmouth Park this year, and I'm excited also to announce a project that we'll be doing on May 26th at 10 a.m. A very, a group of very dedicated Vietnamese-Americans, along with many individuals who are constructing the Vietnam War Memorial at our Orlando Veterans Memorial Park, is located on the shores of Lake Baldwin. It'll be the ninth monument dedicated at the Veterans Park, so please come join us on Saturday, May 26th, Memorial Day weekend, at 10 a.m. Mayor, I think we've, I've sent information about C-2 to everybody, but I think we need to move that, if we can, to New Business as well, so there'll be some amendments I think could be more appropriate for us to air those amendments in public.
We will do that, Commissioner.
Great, thank you. And then also, on C-5, the Mark Street facade grant at 214 East Marks, I'm thrilled about that, and thrilled that we've, that's come through. And it's a great, I appreciate, Mayor, you keeping this in the budget in a way that has a chance to impact our community and impact jobs in our community, just in one small way, but a chance for us to show that we care about small business in our community. And I appreciate your leadership in that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 4. Commissioner Sheehan.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to add my condolences to the family of Gary Sain and to the entire tourism community. And there used to be a lot of, a lack of consensus, because it was Orange County always fighting with Orlando and everything like that. And Gary just came in and said, "You know what? The destination is Orlando. We need to call it Visit Orlando." And he knocked through all that nonsense and just did an amazing job. So it's a tremendous loss. He was a true consensus builder, a really good guy, affable, wonderful, personable, and he can never, ever be replaced. I want to thank Commissioner Diamond for his service, and since District 4 touches all other district boundaries, we've gotten to work a lot together on especially south of downtown. I want to thank you for being easy to work with and working with me on some really cool stuff that we've gotten done down there. So you'll be missed. I want to welcome Commissioner Gray, who hopefully has been studying up and hopefully will be up to speed for the next meeting. If you need any assistance, please call on any of us. We'd be glad to help you out however we can. And I want to also congratulate former District Chief Larry Swig. And now that he's no longer a city of Orlando employee, Mayor, and I'm sure I cannot get in trouble for sexually harassing him at his retirement dinner, but yeah, we kind of gave him a hard time in addition to thanking him for his service, because he's a cop's cop, really was top-notch, you know, every time we needed something, he was very, very responsive to the Commissioner's office. So we really appreciate his service and now going on to the Director of MBI, so I hate to see him go. Really enjoyed seeing the Historic Preservation Awards today. Some of the most desirable neighborhoods have the strictest rules, and I know these are people that really follow them, and Historic Preservation really uplifts these neighborhoods and has helped kept them going. Really love to see Lake Iola Heights and the Lake La Sona Historic Neighborhood celebrated today. On Item B-2 today, on the agenda, Lake Holden Entry Feature. I want to thank Linda Ryan Smith for her hard work on this. And finally, after 10 years after we've annexed this neighborhood, we're finally getting to some of the things that we're supposed to do for them. We also have to landscape a median for them, but again, these are some things we're making happen for the neighborhoods. On Item C-3, on the MPB Agenda, Post-Park Site Outdoor Dining. Glad to see that and the wonderful things that are going to be happening over at Lake Iola. And I will be holding my comments for the Urban Chicken Ordinance. Thank you for putting that on New Business, Mayor, so that we can look forward on that. And I do apologize to my colleagues for bringing this kind of late. I didn't get a chance to meet with everybody, but hopefully, the presentation that we're going to be giving in a few minutes will shed light, and you'll have an opportunity to ask questions and all that. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to go back to Commissioner Lyman. Let's not make this a habit, Commissioner.
Okay, join the rest of them. Lyman, I'll answer to that. I didn't realize this was our last meeting until we got here, and I didn't, I didn't have an opportunity to say, express my appreciation for Commissioner Diamond. And I wanted to tell you that I've really enjoyed working with you. Most people don't know how funny you are sometimes, but, and gotta go have a glass of wine with time to time, too. I'm sure the church people don't want to hear that, but, you know, I'll tell it if I knew it. So thank you for 10 years of service. We supported you when you won, and I'm really appreciative of your service and had lots of fun with you. God bless you and your family, and if you should need us, please give us a call. But I believe Commissioner Let Gray is going to come in. I think he's going to be a little funny one, too. And I bet he doesn't mind drinking a glass of wine from time to time. I'll check on his pastor later. Thank you. Cheers to you, darling.
Okay, then we are going to move Item C-2 to the consent agenda because it requires an amendment that needs to be offered in that fashion. And C-14, we moved to New Business during agenda review, which relates to the Two-Year Urban Chicken and Pilot Program. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, less those two items? Motion by Commissioner Ing, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Accept that. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
All right, I'll give everybody that was just here for the consent agenda an opportunity to return to the rotunda.
They're going to miss my Urban Chicken presentation, Mayor.
I know, but they'll probably catch it on the internet, I'm sure. Okay, let's recess the city council meeting without objection, and we'll convene the CRA meeting for the purpose of accepting meeting minutes from the CRAB for February 29, 2012.
Let's move acceptance.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And we will adjourn the CRA meeting, and we will convene the NID meeting, Board of Directors, for the purpose of accepting meeting minutes from the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District Advisory Council for April 18, 2012. Is there a motion to accept those meeting minutes?
So moved to second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Diamond. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, so the motion carries. And we will adjourn the Neighborhood Improvement District Board of Directors meeting, reconvene the city council meeting. We will move down to New Business. We'll take up Item C-2 first, and C-2 relates to a memorandum of understanding between the city of Orlando and Orange County Public Schools relating to Audubon Park Elementary School. Commissioner Stewart has an amendment. Why don't we, before you take up the amendment, why don't we get the memorandum before us? Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Now, Commissioner Stewart, you are recognized on your amendment.
Great, thank you. We discussed briefly in the agenda review today a couple of things. I'd like to just kind of share for the sake of the public, as well as for y'all, kind of where we are. We felt it was better for us to handle this as a hearing, because we didn't get this, the amendments out quick enough. But I believe all of y'all got copies of the amended agreement between now and then. Let me just touch a couple of quick things. In 2006, we approved a agreement based upon the donation of the land for Audubon Park Elementary School. I think will eventually be called Baldwin Park Elementary School for our own code, our own discussion. In that was a plan of 12 portables that would be allowed to be in a certain location, as well as public use of the land as a park area when it wasn't in use by the school during school hours. Over the course of the past several years, they now have 27 portables over on that property, 15 portables, and they now are actually on joint-use property. We discovered this in April 2011, when they began starting to add new portables for the following year. And when we did, we began negotiations with Orange County School Board to try to remove those. They believe that they are not in violation of the agreement. We believe that they are in violation of the agreement. And so we began negotiation to find out what the status of... And so we began negotiation to find out what the status of this was. So what you have in front of you is a result of this negotiation to avoid litigation, an opportunity for us to support their need to have children, have places to go to school as well as our need to support the committee, I mean, the community as we have in the past with this agreement. In short, the amendments I will offer basically give this information. The, we have modified the portables to be removed on the year two thousand fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, back to its original setup of twelve portables. We also have modified the plan such that in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, the school will be, the old Audubon Park Elementary School will be used as a relief school for Brookshire Elementary. It's currently being used in this school year as a relief school for Princeton Elementary. In two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, it'll be used as a relief school for Lake Silver Elementary. And then it will be razed, and they will build a new Audubon Park Elementary School there. And then in two thousand and fifteen, Audubon Park will reopen. There is some question that doesn't affect here, but how that, what will happen when that school opens? It may end up being a K through five or K through eight based upon what the needs are two or three years down the road. But this assurance gives us the assurance that it will be reopened for the sake of the community. We have, the amendments I'll touch on briefly, and then, Mayor, we probably could take them all at one time if you wanted to, as far as that's concerned. The, we made some modifications to Section Two to change anticipated to proposed. We've made some modifications in Section Three to support a current plan as opposed to anticipated plan. They actually have a plan available for us that supports these revised dates. And we also have made a modification in Section Three that removes fifteen of the portables back to the, from the Audubon Park Elementary School, which would, which is the new Audubon Park, the Baldwin Park location. But I'll read this statement to you because it supports our intent from the original contract that we approved in two thousand and six. If the school board's not able to meet the timeline, it must at least six months prior to the first day of school in the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year request in writing an extension from the city. The request may lay forth the factors that have presented, prevented the school board from meeting the timeline. The city may not unreasonably withhold any extension in light of the intervening factors asserted by the school board. One six-month extension may be granted by the city's chief administrative officer, but any reason for an extension beyond six months must be made to the Orlando City Council, must be granted as an amendment to this MOU. I've added that primarily because the, there may be some timing issue in terms of actually open up in August of two thousand fifteen because of how they're doing the school. And so the intent is that this will allow them six months to remove the, the old portables so that will allow them to go to end of the second semester of that year in case construction isn't met. It'll give us plenty of time to be able to work with them in such a way that is reasonable without having to have both of our DSSs make a decision. So with that, I'd like to submit those.
Okay, Commissioner Stewart moves that the revised memorandum of understanding that has been handed out at your desk be substituted for the published memorandum of understanding. Is there a second?
Second.
Set motion and a second. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, so the motion carries. We're back on the original motion.
Mayor, would you allow, point of personal?
Yes. Mayor, I was gonna just suggest, do we have anybody from the school board coming over to give us?
Is there anybody from Orange County Public Schools?
Nope.
Kyle, thoughts?
Let me, based upon my recommendation, my discussion with Kyle and with May Ann, this will be presented tomorrow to the Orange County School Board. If they choose to make amendments, this will stay in limbo until such time it comes back to us for approval. Much like two bodies in Congress, we must approve the same document. We'll be sending this over to them, although I've made these recommendations on the assurances from Chairman Sublet and, and School Board member Nancy Robinson that they are in favor of these changes. So, so it basically allows us to have some solid deadlines for the community, but also allows an ability for us to modify that if they've got reasonable reasons to modify it. So that's, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, yes it does. Thank you.
All right, then we are back on the original motion, which is, has now been amended to adopt the revised agreement. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, that brings us to Item C, C fourteen, which is the approval of a temporary use permit allowing a two-year Urban Chicken Pilot Program up to twenty-five residences. Why don't we just go ahead and get that before? Is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Sheehan?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stewart. The floor is yours, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. And Commissioners, I know it's kind of unusual for me to be down here, but I've done a lot of research on this, and Mayor Dyer asked me to go ahead and do my own PowerPoint thing, so I decided I'd go ahead and give it a shot. So excuse me, this is my first one, so we put this together for you today. So urban chickens, or backyard chickens, are chickens kept in the city. This is not an urban chicken. This is an urban chicken, which grew out of the urban agriculture movement, which includes community gardening. And y'all, I know we have a community garden actually in several of your districts, and this is actually part of that. There are one hundred and sixty-one cities that have backyard chicken ordinances. The list includes Los Angeles, California, Phoenix, Arizona, Key West, Florida, Madison, Wisconsin, New York, New York, Albuquerque, New Mexico, Seattle, Washington, Honolulu, Hawaii, Oakland, California, Atlanta, Georgia, Austin, Texas, Baltimore, Maryland, and San Francisco, California. These are some of the most desirable cities and most progressive cities in America. Poor sanitation and crowded conditions are blamed for salmonella outbreaks in commercial hen houses. Studies have shown that small-scale backyard chicken keeping for egg production reduces these potential health risks. Orlando's pilot program will limit backyard chickens to hens only. Roosters are not required for egg production. I know some of you asked me about that. They are not, so you will not have roosters crowing. Hens do not crow like roosters, but do cluck for a few minutes after laying an egg. Hens are not as noisy as a dog barking. Concerns other than noise include health, odor, predators, and property values. The risk for catching bird flu is low. There are no reported cases in Florida of bird flu. Proper sanitation and hand washing, as well as keeping the pen clean, eliminates any concern of salmonella transmission. Odor concerns can be addressed by limiting the number of chickens a household can own. Unlike large commercial operations with thousands of hens, a large degree of waste, that can have a lot of ammonia buildup, small backyard operations with three hens like we are proposing are no worse than having a dog. The average dog, and this is weird, but this is stuff you have to know, produces twelve ounces of solid waste per day. The average chicken produces one point five ounces of waste a day, about the size of a quarter. I am not going to show you a slide of chicken poop, you will have to take my word for it. Our regulations require pest-proof containers so as not to attract vermin, and most modern pens are designed to keep predators away. Backyard chicken keeping has become so popular, there are many vendors online that sell pens, which also can be used as rabbit hutches. So if I was to put a rabbit in the same pen, y'all wouldn't have to have any issue with me. We're only doing this because we're putting chickens in it. There is no evidence that property values are negatively affected by keeping backyard chickens. Many of the cities that allow it have some of the highest property values in America. I'm admitting that I want to participate in this program. Our family has to move. And the chickens we have been keeping in Volusia County, we hope we can be housed in our backyard in Orlando. This is the coop that I want to buy, if this is approved. I love gardening, and I love fresh eggs that come from healthy chickens. I'm aware that there are some problems with irresponsible chicken owners and roosters who do not maintain their flocks. And Commissioner Lyman, this one's for you. This is a chicken running around loose. This is not what I am proposing, okay? This is a way to bring these, these problem people into conformance. This is actually the way that Key West dealt with their problem when they would have chickens running around all over their downtown. And you can deal with this through code enforcement violations for the non, for the violators because you'll know who the people are that are doing it right. I ask that we do not punish responsible owners who are willing to be inspected and provide a safe environment for their pets. No chickens will be allowed to be slaughtered on residential property. The purpose of this pilot program is to provide fresh eggs for in-home consumption. I worked for the Florida Department of Agriculture for twelve years before becoming a city commissioner. I really believe in growing and raising your own food and the healthy lifestyle that activity provides. This is a slide of the many kinds of egg that backyard chickens lay. And the bright, the yolk is a bright orange. I can tell, you can really tell the difference. If you get a store-bought egg and compare them side by side, I guarantee you could tell the difference. The yolks are actually a bright orange, they're a lot healthier, a lot firmer. I want to thank you for considering this pilot program. It would be limited to twenty-five homes, and there are already thirteen people who have expressed interest, most of whom live in District Three and Four, only one in District Five. We work closely with the Orange County Extension Service to make sure the hens are properly cared for and that the coops are adequate. I'd like to see Orlando join the many other cities in allowing this healthy practice. I want to thank Jason Burton, who's helped me out a lot through this process in writing this pilot program. Thank you, Jason. And I'm also taking any ribbon over being the crazy chicken lady because I want to see, I will have the best omelets in town. So hopefully we will do this today. And I'd like to introduce, this is not capricious at all, I know I made a few jokes here, but we're actually working with the Extension Service University of Florida, Extension Agent Three for Orange and Seminole County, livestock, natural resources, and ag policy education. I'd like to introduce Dennis Mudge.
Commissioners, and Mayor Dyer as well. It's nice to speak to y'all. The Extension Service for the University of Florida provides education for people and animals all the time. I'm an animal specialist, have a master's degree in animal science, and we have training meetings that are offered very regularly. I can tell you the amount of requests for this kind of thing are just amazing. Orlando's just the first of the cities in the area that are going to start noticing that there's a real interest in having some healthy pets that can stay around. Our cities are loaded with pigeons and cockatoos and, and parakeets and all these birds that we somehow discriminate against the chicken, which can be an excellent pet. What we're going to provide is the training for all these people to make sure they do a really good job with it, and then a site visit as well. We're not regulatory, but we share our education. We're part of the University of Florida. We're willing to do that kind of commitment to make sure this is a class act.
Did y'all have any questions of either of us?
Commissioner, I don't know who buzzed in first, Ortiz. Commissioner Lyman, and then Commissioner Ortiz.
I don't know whether there are questions, but I certainly have comments because you're talking about chickens. My district has had chickens for years, and we have paid a lot of money to get rid of them. Although I understand the permacultures and the green planet idea and the Extension Services, I come from Leesburg, we've been doing all this. I grew up with chickens in the backyard. My mom would go out and wring somebody's neck, we eat it the next day and all that stuff. So that's not an issue for me. And I know you mentioned there's one applicant in District Five. We have our community garden, I expect there to be more. I don't have a problem with backyard chickens and eggs and all of that. I do have a problem with controlling them because what was in Paramore is now in my neighborhood. I mean, you just walk around, you see chickens everywhere. And they do crow, or whatever you call them, I don't know which one does it, you see the hens. Those things, when I'm out walking, they're, I mean, six-thirty, seven o'clock in the morning, they are lighting up the neighborhood. And I don't know whether you eat those or not, but, and I wish somebody would just take them and eat them, but, to get rid of them, but, and you're talking about people being hungry. That's the most surprising thing I've ever heard of, people hungry and there's chickens out there. If, you know, in the country, I would get one myself, probably. But I don't have a problem with it because I believe greening of America and going into the, the green culture and permaculture that's really looking at how we plant our foods and vegetables. But I just have a problem with District Five, with the complaints I get. And I need to know who in District Five and what neighborhood. So as these applications come through, I think every Commissioner ought to want to know what has happened to me because we are accountable to our districts. I don't care what anybody else says. And I have not done well because McRose, as soon as you hire a critter catcher, they must have babies somewhere because the critters are back out there, and they're still there. So that is an issue that is, that we do not want in District Five. I don't have an issue with the ordinance, I understand it. And there are other cities that do have it. I think it's Yale has back, backyard coops and a number, some Boston, some of the, not Boston, but Cambridge, one of them, and there has it. So I am a little familiar with it, but just because I'm familiar with it didn't mean I wanted to bring it to council. But I will support it as long as we can monitor what goes into Five. I don't care what y'all do in other districts, but I'm the one who gets the heat about chickens in Five. And not in the oven, either.
Well, what it's going to have the effect of is it's going to more closely regulate people with chickens, so those chickens that are roaming freely in District Five are now going to be required to go through the process and then to house them in the fashion that is called for in the ordinance.
And if not, Mayor, we're going to have a new stand-your-ground law on chickens. Kill those suckers right then and there. So I will vote for it with that caveat.
Okay. Commissioner Ortiz?
I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be disrespectful. I think it's funny, though. We discussed some of my, my concerns. One of them was that I wanted to be able to bring this to my community before this. So I was wondering if this is time-sensitive. I mean, I would love to bring it to a community so we can get a greater consensus. But I do have some other questions, and one of them is code enforcement. I know for a fact, and I know that we just want to have hens, we don't want to have roosters out there, but you know there's going to be roosters all over the place now if we do this because people are going to bring roosters and, and hens. And how are we going to control this? Because you know what? I remember as a police officer being called for a dog bark, but being called for a rooster. It's going to be, it's going to, look at this.
It's a new budget item.
It's going to be a mess. So anyhow, how, who is going to be in charge of this? Do we have enough code enforcement personnel?
No, because they're still in District Five, so I know we don't.
There's a couple matters, excuse me, that you need to look at. One is there are chickens loose all over right now that need to be under control. And if we don't start addressing this in a positive way, your district's full of chickens, I hate to tell you, but they're there, and roosters as well. We need some examples, we need things done right so people can see how good this can be. We need required training for these people. This is going to really put a good face to this whole thing and make it very positive. And it's really the banty that's the real problem here. The bandies are the only chickens that can fly, and that's the ones nobody's catching and isn't turning up for dinner. We shouldn't even allow them in as part of one of the species or varieties that we're going to have. The rest of them you can run down and catch pretty easy. It's only, you know, one flying chicken that's the bad boy here.
I've still got some other questions. How about raccoons, snakes, and all these other critters, how we address those?
Yeah, that's, that's obviously a real problem is you have to be predator-proof, and we want these birds to be safe if they're going to be kept. They're going to be pets, kids are going to get attached to them, they become part of the family, just like a dog. It can be done right. It has to be done in a way that's predator-proof. And even if you're in an area that is overrun with raccoons, you can place your, your coop inside or have a small coop set up inside the garage overnight. In the daytime, no raccoons are going to come out and then come after these birds. There's a lot of ways to address that, and we do that in this training.
Commissioner, if I may, with all due respect, I have two ways of addressing this. One was to offer what I offered before, and I don't know if you did already, an amendment to do a pilot program on the respective district that you offer. Or if you allow me some time to go back to my district, because I do want to have the feedback from my community, because it's, it's a sensitive issue with a lot of people. I already have some people calling the office about this. So either or is up to you.
Well, I'm going to be really honest, it's time-sensitive for me because our family is moving, and I have to find a home for our hens and our pets. So I'm going to be real honest, I wanted to get it done before June first because that's when my chickens become, our family chickens become homeless. So, you know, I did want to get this done. Even though we had been working on this for a year, I wasn't even planning on getting the family hens. The family just sold the house, you know, Jocelyn's dad lost his job, was a lot of stuff going on right now, and we have to find a place for them. And I, I would hate for them to, to go to someone else. We're attached, and they are like our pets. We've been taking, you know, been taking care of them for a while. And I'm going to be honest with you, this is why, this is why the sense of urgency for me right now. But if you'd like to maybe talk to your folks and opt, you want to opt out now, maybe opt back in later, you know, it's a consent agenda item.
Yeah, I'd rather stay out for now until I talk to, to the, to the community and then uh...
I have no problem with that. And like I say, we could amend it as if, if you would like to come back later.
We're going to have to come back and amend this in any event because it's a two-year pilot program, and it calls for up to 25, I suspect, what's today, Monday, by Friday, all 25 of those permits or whatever.
Yeah, to be quite honest, we already had 13, we've already had 13 requests before it even really got out there.
So I actually suspect in a couple of months, we'll be back here doing that. I tell you what, is, other than Commissioner Ortiz, is there anybody else that doesn't want their district to be part of the pilot program?
Well, I have my light on.
Okay, everybody's got their light on, as it turns out. We'll just go in order, and if any, I think what we'll do is just, since it's a pilot program, we'll let you volunteer to have it in your district or not have it in your district. Commissioner Stewart.
Let me specifically ask the area I just wanted to address. I'm comfortable, I don't know what we think is a proper size for a pilot program, that's kind of the question I would have. Is it 25? Is it 50? Is it 100 in a city our size? So I think when you and I spoke, we talked about doing 25 per district to allow that to be a maximum. But candidly speaking, if it's, can just be approved by consent agenda, we can opt in now and then make those, make those options later on. But I'm happy offering amendment to make it 25 per district and let the district commissioner opt in as they want to, if that's not, if 150 is not too big for a pilot program.
If I could answer that, Commissioner, we didn't want to make it too onerous on the Extension Service.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what would be onerous.
Yeah, I mean, because they're, they're offering, you know, Mr. Mudge and the Extension Service is offering to help us with this program. Obviously, you know, as it expands, it might, we might not have the level of scrutiny if we're going to do 100. He's not going to be able to do each individual home inspection like that. It'll be a matter of going to the class or something like that. But we wanted to prove that it could be done right and do it with a smaller number that was manageable. I think that, am I right on that, Dennis?
Yeah, exactly right. See, obviously, the agriculture community is who I really serve, you know, those are the ones that I have to be at the largest ranch in the world, it's only two hours that way, as you know, and I really serve all those people, and I bring research from the university to them. This is important to us, too, though, this urban farming and very much on the plate. We can't visit too many places. Trainings we can do, and there are others, private and the community that would like to do those trainings, too, and charge for them. So we can, we can do the trainings once we get going. It's that first visit, and I think it's important to make a first visit on the first one so they all do an excellent job. So we've got examples and pictures and those types of things. After that, if you guys decide, your ladies decide to expand the program, that wouldn't be a problem because the ones that violate are going to show up to code enforcement anyway. And you'll be surprised how few it will be, actually.
That was another question, after we talked, Commissioner Sheehan, one of the things that came to mind was, what is the status of enforcement? When you deal with this enforcement issue, we've turned over animal control effectively to the county, but all of a sudden now we're getting ready to permit animal control. So the question becomes in terms of enforcement. Do we have the authority, I guess, and maybe to the city mayor, I mean, city attorney, do we have the authority to step in on this kind of issue to do enforcement?
Man, you have some thoughts?
Yeah, I don't believe we're preempted in any way. On this narrow, particular focus, we're not taking over animal control functions of nuisance animals or animals that are out and, you know, not complying with county ordinances. We're creating an opportunity, if you pass it, to allow an animal that otherwise would be basically out of code altogether to allow to be properly cared for pursuant to the program that you're going to have operate on a pilot basis. So animal control is really another thing, but we, you're right, Orange County does handle animal control.
I know, I know there are, even our dog control is just very confusing. We, if a dog is barking, we can get them on the sound ordinance, but we can't go get the dog for any other reason, but the dog has to be a threat for the police to do something. The animal control comes in from the county. It just really is one of those areas that becomes much of a gray area. So the idea is that if the, I guess I'm asking kind of just from enforcement, if the, if the chicken is in the pen, we got control. If the chicken gets out of the pen, who's got control?
If this works as represented, and I'm confident IFIS knows that it would work in that way if we follow their directives, then animal control would not be brought into play because the animal won't be a nuisance. The, it's the nuisance quality that gives rise to the animal control legal rights. So if an animal is loud, if an animal creates odors, and the kinds of restrictions that they're putting in this program address the nuisance quality of it, and presumably the chickens won't bite enough to raise a legal issue for OPD. I'm not familiar with really aggressive chickens, so I'm not sure, but.
Just roosters. Roosters can be aggressive, not chickens, not the hens.
Other than that, there shouldn't be a conflict.
We have swans that are more aggressive than that.
We do, they're, yeah. I've gotten hit harder by a swan than ever by a chicken, so.
Well, I'm completely supportive of this. I think that's the question I would have and to support Commissioner Lineham is that if they're out of the pen running around the neighborhood, who picks those up? I don't think that's a code enforcement issue to go pick those up. I think that there's a nuisance that would be from animal control, as I would assume. It's just a matter of education, and that's why I like the pilot program, because we don't quite know how we're going to do this.
I think it'll cut down on their number of chicken coops.
I think so, too.
I really do. Once there's a way to be legal and do this right and people can be trained, a lot of people are going to want to get into it.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Stewart, we had a lady today that fessed up, and she said she was from your district and she wants to come into compliance.
I'll bet you, that the reason why I'm concerned about 25 is I'll bet you there's probably 50 to 100 that are already doing it in the city, and we need to bring them into compliance. 25 may continue to keep a large portion of those people not in compliance. So I'm in favor of moving this number up as, as you can handle the need. That's the concern I have.
The trainings are not an issue, the site visits where it becomes a problem, okay? The trainings, we can train as many people, we have Big Autotrain over there, a new facility on Conway, we can train all we need to.
If we have 25 out in the next three months and they're running okay, it's not, it's not unrealistic to add 25 per quarter as long as you're making that initial moving forward.
So 25 works for you, then? Okay. Why don't we start with 25? We can always come back next month if it's a hit and you're able to handle the volume. Okay, so so far I have District 3 in, District 4 in, District 5 in, District 2 not in, District 6, Commissioner Ains.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. You know, I, I was looking at this thing, you know, because when you talk about the chickens being out, well, we have had code enforcement out dealing with these chickens. As a matter of fact, they've brought back reports showing how many chickens they've captured and all of that kind of thing. I don't know what happens with them. But the other thing is when you talk about out of control, and when you are bringing in three chickens per coop, you know, now you're limiting, but when a household wants more than three chickens, I mean, what happens from there? I mean, do they come to council and get a special waiver or what? But the other thing for me is community feedback. And I haven't had an opportunity to get any community feedback from residents within my particular district. But I can imagine, you know, maybe, and I can't speak for anybody, but I just have to get that feedback in order to, you know, be fair from, from my own assessment. But then, when you look at ban the banji chickens, is that in this ordinance? You know, because.
We're going to have recommended varieties of birds that they can have, okay? One of the things you've got to understand is these birds will be pets. You'll be able to walk up to them and pet them and pick them up. That's what happens, seriously. You've just got three birds in your family, you're collecting every day, they become pets. So it's not like you've got runaway chickens. It's just the banty can fly, that's all. That's a problem. And then if they do get out, they can fly to the roof of your house. So we're going to tell them, don't have banties. That's a mistake. Because if it gets loose, code enforcement will probably have to kill your chicken.
Well, see, that's the issue, though, for me as a, as a council person, you know, there should be a restriction if you've got the banji, that that banji needs to be restricted in the ordinance and not given, you know, some latitude from a specific owner.
This, this is not an ordinance, Commissioner, this is a pilot program. Will we adopt an ordinance? We can then put, if you, if we want to put a ban on banties, we can certainly do that at that point. Again, this is a pilot, not an ordinance.
And, and, and point well taken. So I think even in this pilot program, for people not to think that they could have the banjis, that even in here should be restrictions concerning that, too, with chickens flying all over the place. And then the other thing is, is there a cost for a permit to, for any individual that may want to get this?
We've, we've decided to go ahead, and it's an educational on, on the pilot program, to not have, not have a permitting or anything like that, to just, if they're, if they're going to buy something online that's commercially available, to just, and, and to work with the Extension Service.
And the IFIS, Extension Office is stepping up and covering the cost of at least the 25.
And then the other thing that I have is, what type of impact, workload impact, is this really going to put on code enforcement? Because, no, we're not expecting you guys, but we're going to be looking at our code enforcement to go out here, and now they've got to do inspections. And do we have little inspection stickers?
Commissioner, this is set up so that each district commissioner is responsible for inspecting the chicken coops.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right.
No, they're not, excuse me, they're not going to do any visits, okay? That, the first visit's going to maybe by our office. The only time they would come out is if there's been a call by a neighbor that there's a problem and a violation, same as they do right now.
But, but we have to, we have to be prepared. So the code enforcement officer has got to be trained. We got to be trained in this new area that the mayor is, now they've got a chicken coop patch that goes on the uniform for the code enforcement officer to show that they've been trained.
Commissioner, that's why we're doing it as a pilot. If this becomes so onerous and expensive, we won't expand it to all 100,000 homes in the city of Orlando.
And Commissioner, the way that I liken this is like, you know, there are nuisance dogs that run wild and then, you know, animal control has to go after them. There are certainly many of us who have dogs that don't do that, and don't, there's people that don't pick up after their dogs. It's always the ones that are irresponsible that, that create the problem. We're trying to create a situation where responsible people who want to do this the right way can do so. You know, I mean, up and, you know, up until like the 1920s or so, when they started restricting chickens and things in cities, they used to allow people to have them. And my grandparents had chickens. They used to allow them to have them for food and for eggs and things like that, but then they got to be a problem because of irresponsible ownership. We're advocating responsible ownership and, and taking care of them to show a good, we're trying to show the good side. I understand that we have to deal, but the irresponsible people are going to do their thing regardless. I don't think that the people who want to do this responsibly should be punished for the deeds of those who are irresponsible. That's like saying that every law-abiding citizen has to be treated like a criminal. And we want to do this the right way. I have had input from my district that they do want this, and I want to be respectful to those of you who haven't had a chance to, to get this out there and talk to your folks about this, to opt in if you want to. But like I say, we already have probably half of the slots filled at this point. If you just give us an opportunity, I want, I want to show you how successful this program can be.
So Commissioner in or out?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm out as it relates with District 6, simply because I haven't gotten any feedback from them. And, and I want to, you know, do this thing right with them, you know. I need some, some feedback from them, some direction from them concerning this. And, you know, when you talk about law-abiding citizens, you know, being accused of being criminals and that sort of thing, and I tell you, word association, the thing that popped into my mind was TSA. TSA at the airport, because they treat a lot of law-abiding citizens as if they're criminals going through security there at the airports, and that thing is catching on pretty, pretty badly there with them. But Mayor, the other thing that I was concerned about was the coop and how should it be constructed? And should we have requirements on that as well?
Well, I think we have requirements related to the coop.
Yes, we do have, there are requirements related to setbacks, size per hen, and, and Mr. Mudge is basically going to be doing the inspection of that to make sure it's sufficient for those hens and it's not overcrowded or something like that. Like I said, there are many products available on the market. It's up to the person to, to, you know, to work with him, get a proper pen, cite it properly. There are setbacks, five feet from residential properties, different things like that. Duplexes cannot have them because it's not fair if one half of the duplex doesn't like it. We put some pretty, if you, if you read the, the proposal on the, on the, on the pilot program, there are some pretty, there are some restrictions in there, absolutely.
You got a phone call from another university last year saying, why is Orlando so far behind on allowing chickens in their city?
We're bringing in tourists.
And we're bringing in the tourists.
Yeah, we have chickens, we just haven't regulated them, made them legal. Okay, Commissioner, I got you down on as wait and see. Commissioner Diamond, you get to make one last important decision for District 1.
It's funny, I, you know, I was thinking, I was thinking earlier, Commissioner Stewart had his motion about school capacity at Auburn Park, and that's, that's what I thought I'd be dealing with. And if you had told me 10 years ago that the last, the last thing I get to hear about is this particular pilot program, I don't think I would have taken that bet. Couple of thoughts, I think, I think doing the pilot program probably is the right way to go because you'll get to see how many of these concerns are, are going to come to pass or not. And I, I think that's what you get when you get new, new ideas, is people have legitimate concerns, and then over time you see what's what. However, having listened to a couple of thoughts and a couple of comments from my colleagues up here, I wonder when we talk about our districts, you know, I think personally, it wouldn't bother me if somebody has, has a couple, two or three chickens in their backyard as long as they're well maintained. I guess the one caveat I would have as the representative of a district would be, is there some way where we can say, we're okay with it as long as the adjacent property owners are okay with it, to just sort of, you know, because I think that, you know, and I think when, when we get calls from people, it's typically the neighbors that complain about things for good or bad, well-founded or not. And, you know, I think it's probably better to deal with these things before you get too far down the road. So I think, and I'm going to, you know, and I guess, it's, you know, it sounds like you're going to probably fill the slots. You're, if you're at 13, once, I suspect, once this, this gets out, you'll probably find a dozen more people. But I think as far as my district, if the citizens are okay with it, the ones that live next to the, the, the house where this is going to be, then I think that would be fine. If the citizens don't want it next door to them, then I wouldn't, then I would be concerned about it.
Mayor and Commissioner Diamond, we, let me, you, we cannot allow a neighbor to have a veto because that's an illegal delegation of authority. Also, if you added that at this time, you'd, if you could find a way to do it, you'd have to have planning and ownership records, what do you do about tenants, what do you do about mortgagees, what do you do about a foreclosure property? And you'd create a lot of superstructure there that your staff would have to deal with. But my suggestion as an alternative is that that's one of the things the pilot program should look at, that are, when the complaints come in, if in fact they come in, are they coming in from neighboring property owners? So would we want to have some kind of notice? You know, the way we do it in the land use context is not that a neighbor can veto your rights, but rather that we give notice and opportunity to be heard. That's an awful lot of structure to build into three chickens, but, but it's something you could, you could look at to address the, the complaint problem. But I, I would caution against anything that would allow a neighbor to veto just unilaterally because they want to, something that otherwise a landowner would be entitled to participate in pursuant to the pilot program.
Well, how would that, I mean, do you envision some sort of variance process where, because you do the public notice and you have the hearing, and that seems like a little much.
Right. I think that would be way too much for a program this, this small. But what I'm saying is your suggestion is, would be illegal because you would be giving, you'd be delegating this council's power to a third party that doesn't have the ability to veto someone else's rights. So if someone complies with this program, if you pass it, you're giving someone within the realm of the project itself the right to participate in it, and, and you can't have a property owner just veto that for someone else.
And Commissioner, I think, I think we could deal with it on a case-by-case basis. These cages and crates and pens are small enough to where if they have to be moved, if there's a problem, they could certainly be moved. And I think that, you know, once people realize that they're not noisy and they're not, you know, dirty or anything like that, I think sometimes the best way to deal with it is to give them a half dozen eggs, you know? I mean, sometimes people just, you know, it's just a matter of realizing that.
We'll see. You set it up as a pilot, and the way it's set up, it's supposed to not bother the neighbors.
Exactly.
So either the 25 are not going to bother the neighbors, or we're going to find out that they do bother neighbors and we need to switch it up.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think that's the question. And I want to go back to Commissioner Stewart's questions. Stewart's questions. So, is this something code enforcement deals with, is this something animal control will deal with, if you've got noise issues or you've got other issues? I wasn't clear on that answer.
It's both, depending on what the, what the violation would be. Could be either one.
Noise would be code?
Will the police do?
Yes.
Depends on what the issues would be, that they would be.
Okay, I guess I'm looking to the city attorney, so that'd be, if it were noise, that would be code enforcement, or that would be animal services?
Well, as I understand this program, as I understand this program is being designed so that there should not be a nuisance issue. So, in other words, what your expert here, who knows a lot about this, has told you is that if three chickens are contained in a structure as recommended, three chickens aren't gonna create a decibel level that would invoke our ordinance that controls sound and code enforcement. Another possible code enforcement issue would be general nuisance, odors, filth, that kind of thing. But again, they're saying that they know how to properly allow chickens to be kept and mined or whatever the right, egged, whatever the right word is, so that the code enforcement issues that we have on our books would not present themselves. Now, if you happen to have an errant chicken that goes over a certain decibel requirement, it's gonna fall under the sound ordinance.
Yeah, exotic birds are a lot noisier than chickens, believe me, and they're penned all over.
And what about the odors, other issues, if it's just not kept right? What, is that code enforcement or is that animal control?
Well, I think that's why your expert is recommending that there would be certain coop requirements, there'd be a limitation on the number, there wouldn't be roosters, which would speak to, to sound, and there would be a training requirement for the owners, and for, and in addition to all of that, there's gonna be a process whereby they're gonna go in person and check and see if the permit holder or the participant is following all those things. But what your expert is testifying to you is that if those procedures are followed, you don't have ammonia buildup and smells and odors. In fact, Commissioner Sheehan said, a dog is 12 ounces, a chicken is a quarter, whatever she said.
12 ounces of waste for a dog is average, 1.5 ounces of waste a day is average what a chicken produces.
Okay, but I guess, all that being said, though, Ma'am, so which is it, animal control or code enforcement?
Well, it's not gonna be animal control if they're contained in a coop, right? Because animal control couldn't come onto someone's property and take their properly kept pet, just like animal control can't come onto your property and take your dog, no matter how big he is, and he's very big. But nuisance is code enforcement, and if people are following these procedures, what they're telling us is, and of course, that's the point of a pilot program, to see if all that will work, what they're telling you is, if people follow this, you won't have an ordinance. Someone can't say, I'm, I'm bothered by a sound that doesn't meet our sound ordinance, and what they're telling you is, three chickens won't do that. I think this is part of what you're gonna have to work out. What they're telling you is, they've done this in a lot of places, we're not inventing this wheel. But I, I think these issues can be worked out through code enforcement tweaks or ordinance provisions, if y'all like the data you collect through the pilot program, including the level of complaints, if any, and if we find a way to put all those in an ordinance that this council approves, you'll have a chance to obtain the data from, from the real-life pilot program and work them into our structure, which in any event would not be animal control, though, unless the chicken escapes.
It's loose, exactly.
Okay, well, you know, and I guess, you know, in hearing about, you know, code enforcement, my guess is, the first 25 or X number of people are probably gonna be very good, and I don't think you're gonna have issues. I think it probably comes into effect when you have this in place for a while, and people hear about other people doing it, think it's a great idea, and don't understand the commitment that it might take, or might not be as careful as the, the first, the first group of folks that does it. You know, and as far, you know, and I think that's probably what, what happens. I think as far as saying, well, there shouldn't be a problem, you know, I will say, I mean, as much as you hope, you don't have code enforcement issues, you do. You, you know, I'm not concerned about the people that follow the rules, I'm concerned about the ones that aren't gonna follow it. So, I think what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go ahead and support this pilot program, but I think we'll opt out in, in our district, and I'm very interested to see how, how it works out.
Okay, so I have Districts 3, 4, and 5 as the pilot program. You got two more speakers, Commissioner?
Well, one, 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 one application in District 5, you already said it's there, so we don't want, possibly grandfathering anybody, but I, I think it's okay, I'm fine.
You're all voting for it, we just opted out, is what you're saying.
All right, Commissioner Ings?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, why two years on the pilot program versus one? What are we trying to?
That was, that was just what, what staff suggested, and, you know, I, I think that it's a tremendous expense, I mean, to build this coop and everyone like, this coop's probably gonna cost me about $500, I mean, that's how bad I want these eggs and I want to keep my pets, so, you know, I mean, there is a, it, it would kind of be unfair to just give people a year. There's, there's a tremendous amount of, of investment in it, and, you know, I mean, I think it's, I think it'll go okay, we'll, you know, if you want to do a year, staff suggested a couple of years, okay?
There's another good reason, too, they're gonna lay eggs well for two years.
Okay.
Can I get a vote for the vote?
Well, they're discussing.
I knew you were gonna do that.
Well, that's in the paper tomorrow.
I do feel sorry for Commissioner, who's leaving, that this is his last important piece of business. Well, I hope they were gonna make the school board thing the last thing, I didn't want...
Well, I wonder what... Actually, the roll-off franchise will be the last.
There you go.
And somebody might want to ask Mr. Gray if he still wants to move forward with his plans.
All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying, the motion has amended for, to allow a pilot program in Districts 3, 4, and 5, all in favor, the motion indicates. So, do I need to do that formally, Ma'am? I've talked about that, what do you think?
I think you probably should.
Okay, let's, I'll take a motion to amend the... I'll make a motion. Commissioner Ortiz moves that we amend the, what is this thing?
Chicken ordinance, I mean, a chicken.
What is this, Ma'am?
Pilot, chicken pilot program. Urban chicken pilot program.
Urban chicken pilot program. Urban chicken pilot program to limit it to Districts 3, 4, and 5.
UCP.
Without amendment indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
And Commissioner Lyman, I think, was the second on that.
No, that was me that...
Commissioner Ings was the second on that.
Oh, I thought I was voting.
All right, so now we're back on the original pilot program as amended. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so it passes. Congratulations, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioners, I promise we'll be good. Thank you so much.
I don't think it's you we worried about, it's about the other folks who don't get it. Okay, this ruling out.
All right, so final order of business, let's move to hearings, ordinances, second reading number one, Madam Clerk.
...to the city of Orlando granting Randy Suggs Landscaping, Inc., a non-exclusive franchise to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of solid waste within the city of Orlando, outlining franchisees' duties and providing the terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability and an effective date.
Move for approval.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, Phil.
All right, I'll accept Commissioner Diamond's motion, Commissioner Lyman's second. All in favor of the motion, or is there anyone from the public who can testify on the roll-off ordinance? Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. That concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council today. Thank you for tuning in to a very stimulating discussion.